Hey, good evening and thank you and welcome to our regular City South Salt Lake Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven oh seven P M. We are running a little bit high. But I'd like to welcome all of our council members and Cory Thomas and Paul Sanchez both joining us on Zoom. Mayor's Office staff present here tonight and also any members watching on Zoom. With that, I'll turn it over to Nick for our pledge of allegiance.
Please, please raise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So we'll move on to the new action comments. We'll start off with scheduling.
Yes, thank you. Some upcoming items to talk about here in the city. We're excited to offer residents an opportunity to apply for neighborhood block grants. These grants can be used for a block barbecue, a cultural celebration, or a neighborhood kids' party. This is an opportunity for neighborhoods to come together. You can find more information and apply on the city's website. And then also just a reminder to residents that we do have water restrictions in place for these summer months. So no outdoor watering of landscapes or lawns between ten A M. and six P M. And it's also unlawful to wastewater via leaks and wasteful running of the water. So if you do see anything like that, we ask that you report it. You can also go to the city's website to report water waste. And then just another reminder that the Fourth of July parade is coming up and applications for that are available until June thirteenth is the deadline. And then the theme of this year is the power of kindness and you can find that application on the city's website as well. And then city offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-sixth for Memorial Day. And the next city council meeting will be on May twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. Okay, now we will move on to public comments and questions. So just be reminded, we have two sections tonight where that we do have for public hearing. So if you're here to comment on the public hearing, if you would hold off until that portion of the section. But if not, if you do have just a general comment, if we approach your podium, you can start that and please give your name and your city you reside in.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Chanel and I'm from Taylorsville. And I am here today because I am the Senior Officer of Standing Against Fear and Exploitation. I am here because we are on a campaign to make stricter enforcement for sex offenders. Recently, we had a sex offender, Wanda Barzee, who wandered into a park. And she was not on a current violation of court order, but she was on a violation of her registry. However, that only holds a penalty in the state of Utah of a Class A misdemeanor. Your neighboring city has approximately three thousand five hundred and eighty-two. The sex offenders don't stop at the city lines. Your city currently holds a hundred and eighty-four. You guys will intermingle. That is, one person every fifty-five residents is a sex offender. We need stricter punishment. We need stricter policies. We can enact ordinances and we can enact. We can help by legislators and I am here today to say that our parks should be free of offenders. They already get to live by the churches, the schools, and the parks. They don't need to be inside. We need to be able to take our kids there and be free of these people and we want to stand. We want you guys to stand with us. I will be going city to city. I will not back down. This is what we will do to make Utah safer, to make every city safer. And this is what we want. We want each city to stand with us legislatively. We are a five oh one C four and this is what we do. And we want you guys to stand with us. We are making legislative change and we will not back down. Our kids are not up for commodities. Our kids need to be safer. Our families need to feel safer. And our victims do not need to be revictimized. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Good evening. Kim Welch here, representing Granite Library. I apologize I missed April because I didn't look at the calendar and I got here on the wrong day and lights out, no one's home. Thoughts on me? We've got some great things coming up in May. Just this Friday, we're going to have a Zoom Beanie, which is a great like active exercisey kind of class for preschoolers. That's Friday at ten thirty in the morning. We don't often have Friday morning programming for kids, but we do this week. And then we've also got a couple of great things coming up for parents. In conjunction with Salt Lake County Youth Services, we're offering a class on parenting in the digital age. That's on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth from six to eight. And then the next, the following Saturday on the thirty-first from two to four. Rate Recovery Center is teaching a class on teaching consent to your teens specifically for parents and caregivers. And then they're going to have a follow-up teen program in July to also teach them about how to give consent. So we're excited to be able to offer that. We also have a new partnership with Take Care Utah where they're coming to the library. They were here earlier and they're going to be here again on Friday to offer help with people needing to apply for health insurance or health insurance programs like CHIP or Medicaid. And then summer reading is right around the corner, starting June second officially. Although our nearest summer reading kickoffs are going to be the Taylorsville branch and the Whitmore branch. We don't have one at Granite this year. That's going to be Friday, May thirtieth from five to seven P M. Lots of fun activities there to kick off summer reading. So we're excited about that. And also wanted to shout out Promise Salt Lake for coming to our May Fest this year. It was a great success. We had about six hundred people attend and it was a super fun butterfly themed thing, but we got to get our community, you know, partners some some face time with our citizens as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Always like listening for what we have happening in our city. Okay, so we'll move on seeing that nobody else is coming in. We'll move on to mayor comments.
Yes, we had a very busy week last week with mural fest. Kicked it off a little bit earlier this year. Having DOS come back and paint two more sides of City Hall so that we have three sides of our City Hall painted. But so we, this was our eighth year. We got thirteen murals this year. So we're now currently at seventy-nine. We're still like trying to meet the gap of the COVID year. But several areas and cultures from around the world came to South Salt Lake. We had from Virginia, Texas, Georgia, Los Angeles, or California, North Carolina, France, the Netherlands, Puerto Rico, and Colombia. So we had artists from all over the world in our community. Highlight was our Be Kind mural out on the back wall. It is in conjunction with our partnership with One Kind Act a Day. And we had this really cool artist Connor Wright who came and painted with our Promise Kids from Woodrow Wilson. And he got paint on his truck. We got it off. We were signing shirts with pens with the paint. It was a great time. We also hosted the Mural Fest Artist Panel Discussion on Thursday night at the Commonwealth Room. And really unique, we had the National Mural Award Ceremony here and they actually awarded a Lifetime Achievement award to our Mural Fest Artist, Risk, who did the, we had lots of butterflies murals, but the one down on the off of Andy Avenue in the Third West. Super fun. The mural festival was well attended. Just big shout out to Leslie Allen and Jody. South Salt Lake Arts Council team. We have so many city staff participate from all different departments to make that event so successful on Saturday. So just a big shout out to all of the staff and that came and supported. There's three murals. I can't sing or dance, so that's why I really appreciate art.
Thank you for that presentation, Mayor. And then we will move on to city attorney comments. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to city council comments and we will start with Zoom first and we'll start with Paul.
No comment.
Cory?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Ray?
I think this is the first year in the eight years I missed Mural Fest and I'm so bummed. I know I gotta come clean. I wasn't there. I missed it. I was out of town. But congratulations to the city. It's a, one thing I do like is they provide a map of all the murals. And one thing I've done in the years past is we've gone out with our nieces and nephews and we do a self-exploration tour. So that's what I'll have to do for this year to catch them all. Other than that, that's it.
I will just say, yeah, congratulations to the city and staff and putting on another great mural fest. It was nice and warm, eighty-eight, but I had, it was a really great time. So shout out.
I love mural fest. It is my favorite event in the city. So I was in town. I wasn't in town last year, so I know how you feel, Ray. But I really appreciated too. They had a fun bus which went around and like it would drop you at sites and you could go around or just see it. And I just think that really helps with people who might have disability or aging or, you know, people who can't maybe walk. So I really appreciated that. And I also wanted to just say I've been noticing when I'm driving home from work on thirty-nine hundred South heading east. All of a sudden, I don't know if it's how long it's been there, but the bridge, the signage that we talked about forever ago. On one side, it's South Salt Lake and on the other side, it's Mill Creek and it looks so beautiful. It just every, every time I drive by it, I'm just so proud of South Salt Lake and all of the things we're becoming. And so if you haven't seen that on the bridge, it's really, it's really cool. Makes me proud that we are South Salt Lake and that I live here.
Nothing tonight.
I think like everyone else, I want to say that was a really good festival thinking about it and just seeing the amount of people downtown kind of gave me an idea of what it's going to look like because we've been talking so much about all the downtown development that I can now envision and see what and what it feels like to have all these people at our city. So that was great to do that. But also one last thing about the building as we were leaving, one of the biggest compliment, I had someone who come with the guy, he's like, what building is this? And I said, it's our City Hall. He's like, no way. He's like, this has got to be the best one. I said, I'm pretty sure it's probably the best City Hall in the nation. So it looks great. So shout out to everyone who's participated. Thank you. Okay, so now we will now move on to action items and that's going to be appointments by the mayor.
Yeah, can I just add, we are putting a new sign up. We had to take our sign down so it could be painted, but there will be a South Salt Lake sign. It's just not here yet. All right, I'll have Kevin Miller come forward first and present him this evening to the city council to be reconsidered as or to be considered for a reappointment to serve on the civilian review board.
Sorry, that's my line. I'm looking. Does anybody have any questions, any comments? Okay, so we'll move that. Okay, so I'm looking for advice and consent.
I'll make a motion that we give advice and consent for Kevin Miller to serve, to be reappointed as a civilian review board regular member.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sharla and a second by Leanne. This is going to be voice roll call. We'll start with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Kevin is currently serving as the vice chair with joy, so. And then again, Conrad was unable to make it tonight, so he'll be next week with joy. But new face, well, newish face. I think you were here just a couple of weeks ago, feels like. But advice and consent for Sarah Jensen to serve as a new civilian review board member in the alternate role.
Okay, do we have any questions for Sarah? Okay, we'll move on. Now we'll add, I'll make, have anybody for a motion for advice and consent?
I'll make a motion that we give advice and consent for Sarah Jensen to serve as an alternate member on the civilian review board.
I'll second.
With a motion by Sharla and a second by Leanne, voice roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations. And looks like we have another one here?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and is that it? Oh, it's unfinished business? Yeah, okay. So we have unfinished business. Now we'll move on to unfinished business one.
Thank you, council. So we discussed back when we were talking about boards and board assignments and we discussed the Salt Lake Valley mosquito abatement and the fact that that meeting is during the day and it's hard for council members to fill that role. Conveniently, the current makeup of the Salt Lake Valley mosquito abatement board has the statutory requirement that they need for elected officials. So they said we could put a staff member forward. So that's why we have to do a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Just a resolution.
Action in a public meeting. So because this is a midterm vacancy, we treat it the same way as when Ray took the council seat, the midterm vacant seat. We had to post notice and give people time to apply. The only one is Chris, so.
So Chris, you want to come? So sorry, I had one job. So that's who we would like to have suggest serve as our representative for the Salt Lake Valley mosquito abatement board.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? And remember, we did discuss this maybe a month or two ago. So does anybody have any questions?
And then I'll just remind you, this is a resolution that you've got. But the line is blank for the name to be appointed. So just in your motion, please use Chris Marquette as your.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion here.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council appointing Chris Marquette to the South Salt Lake South Salt Lake Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board of Directors.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Ray and a second by Leanne. We will do voice roll call. We'll start with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations.
And then can I, sorry, can I just remind you that you do have a public hearing at seven twenty and one at seven thirty? So.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so we have about three minutes. Okay, so we'll move on to unfinished business.
Let's go back to the seven twenty public hearing since it's already seven twenty-seven. Let's do that.
Okay, let's do that. So we will shift gears here and we will move over to the public hearing. So this is going to be for the Mosaic Interfaith here, information that we did have. We did receive some information this, the last meeting. So we're going to have Sharon come up here to present that information.
Sharon Hari, Department of Neighborhoods. Thank you, City Council, for considering this matter again. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide the services that in partnership with Mosaic. As we talked about last time, we are providing food bank services, adult education, healthcare counseling, and many other things with the support of Mosaic actually leading those and having the connections with Utah Food Bank and another of other service providers. Our request is to provide them discounted rent at a city-owned property at twenty west, twenty-seven hundred south. Oops, get this. Typing about trees. And if you wish for me to repeat any of the information, I'm happy to go through the slideshow again. But basically, we had a need to do this hearing to prove the to have the city council approve the fact that we'll give them discounted rent, which allows them to keep their rent and utility costs level from what they currently pay at the Historic Scott School Community Center. As we move them to a new location where they'll be paying all their own utilities and we'll be giving them a four hundred and twenty-five dollar discount on their rent. And Josh has prepared the ordinance, or sorry, the resolution. We're all stumbling over terminology today, but thank you for preparing that. And if you have any additional questions or would like that resolution, I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? We did have this presentation. Do you want to present just, you know, maybe? Or we're actually, we're open up to public comments. Does anybody want to make comments on this here? Okay, seeing that we don't have anyone there, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this. Does any of the council members, do you guys feel like you guys wanted to have a quick rundown on this for anybody who may be watching?
I felt like she explained kind of what it was just now.
And I did just scroll those slides up one more time.
Okay, well, I think if we don't need to, we will go ahead and make, make a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council authorizing a rental rate for Mosaic Interfaith Ministries, a nonprofit corporation in accordance with Utah Code ten eight two.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Sharla and a second by Leanne. We will start with roll call with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Hey, that passes there. Thank you, Sharon. We appreciate that. Okay, we will now move on to the public hearing number two. That is going to be for the tentative budget for Crystal, one by Crystal Buck.
Hi, council, again. In the work meeting, as you know, we I presented about our proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The purpose of the public hearing is, you know, to receive public input, but what we're asking the council to do tonight is to tentatively adopt the tentative budget for the coming year, which Josh will correct me if I'm wrong, but it really just means that you're acknowledging that I presented it to you for the process to eventually pass it or change it. Are there any questions?
I have questions. Is this appropriate a time to ask questions?
So let's go ahead and open this up first to the public comment and then we'll move on to the questions afterwards. So is there anyone in the making want, who wants to make a public comment on the tentative budget? We'll open that up here. Okay, seeing that we don't have anyone coming here, we'll close the public comment and then now we will move on to the questions. We'll start with Ray and then we'll move on to Paul.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Crystal, and I appreciate you adding the color to the financial budget and doing your best with that. That was good. My first question is, I know that you said with the CPI, the sales tax, maybe expecting it to come in a little bit lower than you typically would. How does that show up in the proposed budget as far as where you allocate money and what you're sort of expecting?
Yeah, so we allocate sales tax across three different funds. The general fund, the public safety special revenue fund, and the capital fund. If you add all of those numbers together, then they equal what we're budgeting for the coming year to receive from sales tax. And that number for next year is slightly lower than what we budgeted this year. Just erring on the side of conservatism there. It's much easier to add to the budget than it is to take away from it.
Yeah, okay. And then something else that wasn't on your considerations, although I'm sure it was, was sort of essentially what the administration at the U S level has been doing, cutting programming. And I know that I think that was probably one of the reasons that we put a lot of emphasis toward Promise program because we know we get a lot of grant funds. So how does the budget, and I haven't looked at it closely yet, none of all the details, but how does that show up in this year's budget as far as funding Promise with consideration of a lot of federal programs getting cut?
Yeah, that's a great question. We have applied for several grants that we've received in the past. Most of them, we have a reasonable expectation of receiving, but our grantors have not been reviewing and awarding as quickly as they used to because of their own uncertainty, I'm sure. And they want to make sure that the dollars are going to where they're best serving. We have budgeted Promise from a more optimistic point of view as far as that goes. There are some programming that we currently have not received a promise of funding yet. But we continue to apply for grants for those for those areas and we're optimistic that we'll be able to find some money somewhere.
We're also considering like foundation grants, so grants that aren't necessarily controlled by federal dollars. So we've applied for quite a few additional federal type, or sorry, foundation type of grants. We're waiting to hear on those.
Okay. And then under the infrastructure budgets when it comes to water and sewer, you mentioned that the budgets were prepared essentially with the assumption of a rate restructure or an increase. So would those increases or restructures theoretically come before the adoption of the budget? Is that something that we would be expected to be discussing next several council meetings?
I believe your presentation is next council meeting.
Okay.
Specific to the water.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that rate restructure is only for the water department.
And that the two dollar increase, I think for the sewer, is that just a two dollar flat for every residential and business?
So it's, the current fee is ten dollars per unit. It would raise it to twelve dollars per unit.
Okay. And then this is my last question. Thanks, council. Sorry, they're all looking at me. Okay. My last question is the transportation infrastructure fund. Just clarity, how is the fund funded? So essentially, would this be a new fee or tax coming from residents or businesses? Or is this allocating dollars that we basically get from opening up a funding source of how we collect fees and taxes already going to this fund?
Yeah, in the budget, currently we have budgeted a transfer of fund balance from the general fund to help fund or to help pay for the operations. And then the projects are covered through Class C funds and tax funds that we've received or that we anticipate receiving.
So not a new tax or fee?
We have not budgeted for a new fee at this point.
Okay, I think it's just important to clarify if people are watching.
Yeah, there's no new revenue in the current budget, uh, as it is presented to you. But as you are well aware and we've had conversations about, we've been working on a study and we'll have that presentation for you in June.
In June, okay.
But as the budget stands today, it doesn't contemplate any new revenue. This is revenue that is either designated through state statute, can only be spent a certain way and we're just moving those funds. It's, it's a, it's a more transparent way of showing where funds, like restricted funds are in the accounts that they, it can be used for.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um. Let me, yeah, let me go ahead and move on. And Paul, I know you had a question. Go ahead, Paul.
Um, yeah, so based on what I saw, our budget is a hundred and thirty-five million approximately. Um, how, how has that changed from last year? And are we looking at possible property tax increases to cover the additional budget?
Uh, the total budget's actually less than last year. I can get you those numbers, um, uh, and have those ready for the next meeting. Uh, so that's one side of it. And the second question you asked was about property taxes. We have not budgeted or anticipate a property tax increase this year.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll move on to Sharla now.
Okay, um, so you, we talked about liability insurance, but what about like health benefits and stuff? What are we anticipating?
Our health insurance rose six percent this year. The city has committed to cover ninety percent of our, um, employees' health insurance costs and the employees cover the other ten percent. Um, and so that's, uh, where it is.
And then I really just wanna say, I love that we're separating out the transportation fund. I think it's just so much clearer for everyone to understand, but are we every year gonna have to transfer some money from over for some operative cost because, you know?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, unless other sources of revenue are identified in the future, then we would have to make a transfer every year.
Okay, but I do think it's more clear and I like, I like it, actually, the structure of it, so.
Yeah, in the past, we've had major roads projects that have had to be funded through the general fund and the capital fund and sometimes even partly through one of the utility funds. Uh, because though, that's where the money has been housed that we received to pay for it. But that makes it very difficult to be able to track and understand the real cost of some of those very large projects. So we're excited to present this new fund.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Okay, I just wanna say, Crystal, thank you for presenting these, the budget to us and to all the departments who participated in this because it makes our job easier and if we decided we had to do a budget, I don't know. I don't know if it would have taken us this long because you presented a budget so well, so thank you for doing that, Crystal.
Thank you.
Um, so if there's no more.
Just, just to clarify, if we have questions, they go to Sharla?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is, that is true. So council, if we do have any more questions regarding anything else that we need to have more discussion on, uh, send them to Sharla and I think she'll give us timeline to like Friday, I think, something like that.
I'm actually, I'm gonna, and I have an email almost ready to go out. It'll be Monday, five PM. And then, um, that just helps us, so we have staff ready to answer specific questions. Sometimes it's too hard. We don't have the right people here if we're asking questions tonight. Crystal can field most of it, but, um, so Monday, five PM, watch for that email and just reply. Or you can text me, either way.
Yeah, I'm excited to see your questions.
I can't tell if that's sarcasm or not, Crystal.
No, I, I do.
I'm just kidding.
I, I like, I like most of the questions.
That's fair.
The ones that make my brain hurt, not so much, but yeah.
Okay, so now we will move on with the council. We will decide that we want to, would you wanna take action on this? Oh, yeah, we do. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we, what are we doing?
I will make a motion that we adopt an ordinance of the city of South Salt Lake City Council tentatively adopting the tentative budget for the city of South Salt Lake fiscal year, July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sharla and a second by Ray. We will do roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes there, so we will now move back on to, we'll get back on track the other side. We'll come, have Jonathan come back up for unfinished business number two.
Thank you, Jonathan Widenheimer, Community and Economic Development Director. During tonight's redevelopment agency meeting, you approved issuance of up to thirty million dollars in bonds for the downtown. That included, uh, in our local agreement with the city to pledge excise tax revenues for coverage of that debt service. Uh, during your work session during the council meeting, you considered, um, uh, the reciprocal in our local, back to the RDA for that excise tax pledge. So we're asking you tonight to consider approving that resolution, or that ordinance, excuse me, thank you.
Okay, so now do we have any questions from the council?
No questions, but.
Resolution.
Jonathan, can.
Or do you wanna do?
We, um, just for people watching, because I mean, if they're watching the RDA and they see that we took a motion on this already and approved it, can you maybe just clarify why both the city council body and the RDA body both have to approve?
Sure, so the, is part of, so the RDA agency agreed to have that, those bonds issued. Um, what we're asking the city council to do is pledge revenues that go to the city to cover the debt for that bond. Currently, the, the city's general fund is already using and covering, uh, receiving the revenue from the excise taxes. There's no, there's an agreement in place that pledges the use of those excise taxes now to existing RDA debt. We're asking you to amend that existing agreement. The, the current agreement sunsets and I think it's twenty-thirty and we're asking you to consider pledging it beyond twenty-thirty for the remaining term of the new bonds, which I think is twenty-thirty-eight. I don't know if that, is that what you're looking for?
I think it's just like, sort of an interesting civics lesson on why city council is also the RDA body, how we happen to be enacting as both officers, both bodies, and so how we put on different hats to both approve this.
Sure, I, I should, I should have tried to make that more clear. There's, there's different statutes and different roles and different functions that, that you perform in those two different roles. And there's access to different types of funding that have different state statutes behind them. And the separation of those two is very intentional by the state code and by your roles. I'm sure Josh can help when I say something dumb, but the functions are different and that, again, they, they, um, anytime this, the RDA board wants to use city money, they can't just go ahead and reach into the pocket and borrow it. They have to do it by resolution and ordinance that happens in a public meeting, um, to the benefit of protecting the citizens and each of the two separate entities as they function.
Thank you for that, Ray. I'm pretty sure that's what we, a lot of our community members want to hear. So we did make a, uh, we did actually prove this had come into unfinished business, so now I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the city council, of the city of South Salt Lake authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to enter local agreement between the city and redevelopment agency of South Salt Lake, Utah in connection with the issuance by the agency of its tax increment revenue bond series twenty-twenty-five and related matters.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Ray and a second by Sharla. We'll start with roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes. Thank you, Jonathan. And now we will move on to new business, um, number one with Josh.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up. Next council meeting, we're going to have a presentation on, uh, impact fees for the wastewater. All this item will do is match the code to the plan. So once the plan's adopted, there'll be new fees, there'll be new, uh, language and verbiage that needs being put into the code. So this is just in anticipation of your consideration next time when we have a public hearing for that. If you choose to adopt the impact fees as outlined in the impact fee facility plan, impact fee analysis, then this code, we would ask that you adopt that as well to match the language and the numbers and everything else like that. Same thing we did with the culinary water previously this year, uh, or late last year, whatever it was. Um, and it, the, we, we did the impact fee, um, itself separately and then we adopted the, the code update to match. So that's all this is, is, is to match what you'll get at the public hearing, uh, next time, should you choose to adopt that.
Okay, we did have that information in our drop boxes. Anybody have any questions? And I think really it's just kind of cleaning up a lot of language in that when we did take a look at it. So it is just, um, kind of cleaning up for those who need to see something.
Right, so we'll ask that you take action after the public hearing next meeting.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to move this item to the next council meeting.
I'll make a motion that we move this to unfinished business, uh, for our next scheduled regular meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ray and a second by Nick. We will start with roll call towards all, um, yes, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do we have a need for a closed meeting? Okay, with that, I'm looking for someone to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Leanne, a second by Ray, all in favor?
Yes.
Hey, thank you for everyone who has joined us.